Commission of April 6th, 2021. I'll briefly explain the format tonight's meeting. We will call for items on the agenda. We will first hear staff report, then open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and or opposition to the request. Usually, the first person in favor is the person who's brought up the proposal. When you come online and speak, please give your name and address for the record. And then after all parties have spoken, public hearing will be closed and then we'll hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. I believe we need to do a roll call, a roll call of the attendee. No, we do not. Okay, well, then we'll go ahead and get started then with the first item on the agenda. The first item for the agenda, Stillwater Habitat for Humanity Preliminary Planned Unit Development, PUD 21-01, requesting review and approval of a preliminary planned unit development to rezone from the currently zoned light industrial district to residential single-family small lot planned development and create 14 residential lots and one common area on a portion of property addressed as 505 East 18th Avenue. Harkins, staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Ryan Harkins, Community Development. So this is a PUD, a planned unit development. This is on the southern boundary of the community. You can see here in the hatch pattern, the subject property, it is part of a larger parcel owned by the applicant. Currently, it is, as you see the red line there, adjacent to the corporate boundary along 19th, just off of 19th and Perkins Road. Subject site is inside the yellow polygon on this aerial. This is looking obviously north from this area along Flood Plain and 19th at Perkins, looking north into the city. The future land use map designates this area as residential. You can see on the graphic here, commercial hugging Perkins Road as it comes in to the community and then farther up towards, say, 6th Avenue. This is a close up of the area. So you can see Lenin C Residential, just off of 19th on the north side. You can see Ag and open space essentially because of the Flood Plain south of 19th. And then you can see commercial hugging Perkins Road, in this case, on both sides of Perkins as you go north into the city. The zoning map, as we see here, notes light industrial for the entire site that's owned by the applicant. Again, the subject area they're looking at for the planned unit development is just the southern part. So you can see 19th and Fern where the proposed development would take place. This is their proposed site plan. It shows the layout of parking stalls as well as the layout of where the lots are on the property. These are the elevations they've provided for some of the dwelling units as well as the floor plans. And these are the other elevations and floor plans. So it's a mix of four-bed and three-bed units on the site. Any questions of staff before we continue? Okay, we would note the applicant and their agent are here to answer questions as well.
That's, that's great. Thank you very much. With that, then, I will open the public hearing. All those who wish to speak in favor of the proposal, please. I think Stephen, do you want to come first or the, or does the actual representative wish to speak first?
I'll talk first and then Hillary will talk after that. So, good evening, Commissioner Stephen Ghost with Ghost and Associates, 113 East 8th Avenue, here on behalf of our client Habitat for Humanity, seeking approval of its preliminary planned unit development for about 14 homes at the northwest corner of 19th and Fern. As Ryan mentioned, the, the layout of this is intended to be in the spirit of a pocket neighborhood, smaller lot, the community space out front. I'm going to see, we've, we've been tweaking the site plan a little bit. Let me see if I can share it here. Can everybody see this? So, you know, access off of Fern, a common parking area, homes around the perimeter, some common areas here in front of these homes, these long rectangular green areas that could be community gardens, just grass to play, any number of things. It's really up to the, the neighbor, the neighborhood to decide what they'd like to see in that area. The site's currently a laydown yard and storage area for Habitat for their home building operations. There's a metal building on the site. This used to be an old construction yard. There's a lot of gravel parking and laydown areas out there. Habitat restore operation is immediately to the north, to the east are single-family homes, to the west is the mobile home park, and to the south is the Water Creek. Water and sewer will be extended into the site from Fern. We're working with electric, gas, and communications to really nail down the layout for those utilities. They'll be screening on the west and north with a six-foot opaque fence. Screening on 19th and Fern is intended to be hopefully semi-opaque, not just a solid wood fence. The PUD, some of the variances we're seeking in the PUD, reduced lot sizes and setbacks, parking at a rate of two spaces per home as opposed to one per bedroom, just based on what Habitat's provided on their past homes and what they're seeing in the market. Modification, again, to the zoning from a light industrial to a single-family home. The site plan changes, you see on this plan versus what was in the packet, is we've rotated the south lot counterclockwise one lot and moved the storm shelter and playground area out towards the entry. The main reason for this is to get some of the quote-unquote utilities, the trash enclosure, the mailboxes out closer to the street. We talked to Chris Knight and Waste Management about the best place to put dumpsters and came up with that. And then there's a few two-bedroom, or four-two-bedroom homes that have been put on here, mixed in with the threes and fours that were on here, and, and turned some of the homes where the yards, especially on these four-bedroom units, really incorporate the 20 to 25-foot utility decent that we're going to be having on the north and south lines to get utilities in there. So with that, I'll let Hillary talk about the overall project, what their views are for it, and we'll be available to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you, Stephen. This, this project, the genesis, was really a lack of building and land space for Habitat. We've built 40 homes now in Stillwater, and we were seeing our land options dwindle. And we had sort of long desired to build a community-driven housing development. And so this was our opportunity to do that and make use of some underutilized land in Stillwater that we had access to. So the, as you can see, the, the community design is intended to foster neighbor connections. These would all be Habitat Partner families that go through our approximately two-year vetting process that, and sweat equity process that we, that we do to identify and qualify our homeowners. And we look forward to partnering with other agencies that can help us in, in developing the community garden aspect. And also, we view what would eventually become a homeowners association as sort of a leadership development opportunity for our homeowners that will be in that, in this So if there are any questions, we would, we'd love to talk about it.
Questions from commissioners?
Hi, and this is Vice Chair Phillips. I had a few notes written down from looking at the packet, but Stephen, I think you've addressed most of them in a, with, with the drawing being so small that I was able to look at previously, I was just wanting to know a little bit about the fencing and sidewalks. And you did point out the trash dumpsters. Could you kind of explain a little bit, maybe where there's hardscape and where there is some, some green?
Yeah, let me see if there's an easy way on here to draw some lines, so. See how my PDF skills on the go are. So there'll be a sidewalk along the, the front of these units, and then a sidewalk adjacent to the parking to create this little square. there'll be some sidewalks along the edges that serve these edge homes and create the access into these. So then that'll be mirrored on the south side as well. And then there'll be a sidewalk, of course, going out to Fern. So that, that's the hard space. And then hopefully the parking and the drive kind of show up in the middle of, of what that would be. And then on the front of each of these homes, you could see it in the elevations in the floor plan, is a fairly large covered porch to create those outdoor spaces, outdoor living spaces that are still private but open into these common areas to allow, allow that neighborhood
And then you indicated a fence at, along 19th and along Fern?
Yeah, I mean, so really, the, it'll be kind of boxed in, but there'll be an opening on either side of the drive, and, and it won't be gated, but the fences will probably Again, trying to draw on the fly here. That area would be open, you know, there wouldn't be fence in that area, but have some fences along Fern and 19th to allow some privacy for these rear yards, but try to get it, whether it's a dog-eared fence that's offset, the offset ticket, so you've got privacy, but you've still got some airflow along those roads. Locally, 19th's not highly traveled. There's a good amount of traffic traversing from, from Perkins over to May, but nothing like we'd see on our arterials and collectors.
And then Hillary, you mentioned a possible plan for a neighborhood garden?
Yes. Could you, that, that's, oh, sorry, please go ahead.
Yes, could you, could you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, well, we envision that area that, that Stephen's kind of highlighting there between those two sidewalks that separate kind of front porches from the parking space, lends itself to some raised beds, some potential partnerships with Our Daily Bread or with OSU, you know, landscape and horticulture departments that might come and mentor our homeowners. We look forward to hosting gardening classes and opening those to the community and using that as kind of a, a community-driven space that offers leadership opportunities for our homeowners and then education for the community.
Thank you so much. I think you guys have answered all my questions. I appreciate it.
A question from Commissioner. Seeing none, thank you all very much. If anyone else would like.
Sorry, bear with me one second. Try to be respectful. I just, more for Habitat, if you have these numbers with you, what is your, like, turnover time on homeownership of people who've completed your program?
You mean from the time that a homeowner applies for homeownership to the point that they are?
How long do they normally keep the home?
Yeah, we have sort of a unique mortgage system that we write, which has a second mortgage. We sell our homes at our cost, and then we, the full sales price reflects the market value in the appraisal. So we include a second mortgage, which is forgiven at, at 10 years. Granted, it's the, the owner's primary residence. And then we also typically write in a first right of refusal so that if a family ever has to leave or ever leaves that home, that Habitat has the first opportunity to buy that home back. So of the 40 homes that have, 39 homes that Stillwater Habitat has built in Stillwater, there are only two of those homes that aren't currently owned by Habitat homeowners.
Other questions from commissioners? All right, well, thank you all very much. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of the proposal? Seeing none, does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the proposal? Seeing nothing, I'll close the public hearing and ask for staff's recommendations slash options, alternatives, that's the word.
Good what you meant. So, okay, let's just make it on. So staff would be, wanted to remind Commission that the PUD obviously takes traditional development concepts and alters them in a way that fits the uniqueness of a site, which is what the applicant and their, their agent have done here. With regard to specific findings, staff does feel that the PUD request is appropriate for the site and it's an appropriate reuse. It fits within the realm of the conference of plan with regard to the future land use element. And we also feel that it is a PUD concept that is easy to fit into this surrounding neighborhood and is compatible. Having said that, your options or alternatives are to, A, approve as recommended in the staff report and presented to you today. B, approve with conditions and specifically state what those conditions are. C, you can find that the request is not appropriate and recommend denial. Or you can, if you need additional discussion, table this item to a date certain. We would just be mindful of if there are items to discuss that we make sure we make those clear to the applicant and their agent so they know what issues we need to address. Questions about the findings or alternatives to staff?
I do not see any questions for staff.
Well, I'll just, oh.
Go ahead, sir.
Chairman, a quick comment. I just want to commend both Habitat for Humanity and the architect for this PUD. I think affordable housing in a pocket neighborhood concept is an excellent idea. I think we've seen one of these already early in March with the, the SUP up on, what was that, North Jefferson, except that was directed toward rental and this is directed toward ownership. But regardless, I think this is an excellent idea and should be encouraged more often.
I'll move to accept findings and recommend that City Council approve the proposed PUD and MAP amendment as presented.
I can second that.
I'll second that.
All right, did, did you get that second down? Okay. And do you, you need to take, we'll now vote.
Mr. Reckelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Alred?
Yes.
Mr. Bobo?
The motion passes five yes to no nos. The next item on the agenda, miscellaneous items from staff, planning, commissioners, or city attorney for discussion. We have a presentation of public feedback for the 6th Avenue corridor study. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ryan Harkins, Community Development. So I know some of you were at the public input meeting last week at the community center. The 6th Avenue corridor study is a project that encompasses an area that goes from Western to Perkins Road and then from University South to 9th Avenue. It's a companion project to the engineering design for upgrades to 6th Avenue, being done by ODOT and EST currently. We're approaching the 15% design for that engineering project. However, this, this companion study takes a broader approach to look at alternatives for transportation, other modes like pedestrian and bikes in this study area, how we can maintain better cross connections from one side of 6th to the other, but also how we can redevelop areas along the corridor and, or in the study area to facilitate better growth and opportunities. With us tonight are three of the staff members from the team, led by Confluence. So Marshall Allen and Terry Brookbuehler, as well as Christopher Shires are here. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to them and let them kind of give you a brief update of where we're at, answer questions you may have. And I know you, some of you, again, were at the meeting and in some of the breakout sessions. So if you have follow-up you want to share with them, you're certainly welcome to do that. But at this point, I'm going to let them present kind of where we're at and the information we've heard so far, just to give you an update and then answer questions you have.
All right, great. Thanks, Ryan. And actually, Chris Shires is not on. I realized, I don't know if I changed my name or if he got in and pranked me somehow. And I was texting him, why are you on this call? Now I feel like an even bigger idiot. But good evening, everybody. Terry Burke Bigler and Marshall Allen, we're happy to be here. Probably have about a 20, 20-minute or so presentation to go over what we've, what we've collected and what we've heard to date. Obviously, there's a lot more to it than what we'll go through tonight. And then also, just so I don't forget at the end of this, there is information and opportunity to engage online at the Speak Up Stillwater website. So, and that will be open for a couple of weeks as well. So with that, let me share my screen. All right, everybody see that? Okay, so, so we started this a little over a month ago. We initially met with advisory committee there in town, and then we were back last week to engage with the public. And then we also had a number of one-on-one meetings with some key stakeholders through the corridor. Tonight, I want to just kind of introduce who we are for those that don't know, talk about what the purpose of this study is, kind of hitting on what Ryan, or touching on what Ryan already hit, giving an overall overview of our timeline. And then we'll go over some of the findings and what we've seen so far. And we're, we're still in the learning phase, just beginning to get into understanding, you know, what the community's vision and priority goals for the corridor are going to be. So Confluence, we're a landscape architecture and planning firm located, Marshall and myself are in our Kansas City office. And then Chris Shires comes out of our Des Moines office. He's our principal planner, does work in all of our, all of our offices, all of our communities. And then you can see on that map that, you know, we've got a number of offices throughout the Midwest and landscape architecture and planning is what we do. We're not engineers, we're not architects. We team with other experts. We are teamed on this project with EPS, Economic and Planning Solutions, out of Denver. Dan Gimmone and his team are providing the market study, financial and economic analysis for the project. And when we get a little farther into this and start developing some concepts for some opportunity sites, as we'll call them, they'll be testing the viability of some of those. So beyond just doing an assessment of where the community in the corridor is today, they'll be helping us kind of do a litmus test or vet some of these options in the future. And then we're also partnering with HDR for the transportation aspect. And then also on our team over there on the bottom left corner, Matt Ebbett is our, he's an associate principal in our Kansas City office, and his focus is really on the urban design, which will, we'll touch on a little bit, but that really will come in a little bit later as we start creating some, some more ideas and recommendations. So why are we, why are we here? As Ryan mentioned, we are not working on the ODOT project. It's a companion project that we're working on, and we're going to take the information from them and, you know, in some ways, do no harm, make sure that the ideas that the community have for the land use and redevelopment along and around the corridor either don't negatively impact ODOT's priorities and then conversely, that their plans don't negatively impact what the community wants to see for the corridor. So we just have received some information from them, and our team is beginning to look at that now. We're going to talk, I mentioned urban design, we're going to talk about what the corridor looks like and what could be done to make it maybe a better first impression of the community for all the travelers that are coming into town on a regular basis and for people that just really kind of instills a sense of pride in the community. The map on the right there shows how we begin to think about corridors like this. And for us, it helps to kind of give them some sense of personality. And you've got an area, you know, over around Main Street, just to the west of, of Main Street and downtown, until you get to about the strip that is more urban now, you know, not maybe super downtown urban, but, you know, a lot of signals, a lot of crossings, a lot of traffic. And then you've got the important location there by the strip from a, kind of a present standpoint and the, the campus entrance at, at Monroe, as well as even that connection from Hester or along Hester up into campus. So, you know, that's an important place we're going to be studying. And then when you get farther to the west, it's certainly got a more suburban feel. You still have some residences along the corridor. You've got larger frontages, the medical center, some other office type uses out that way. And then when you get farther to the west, Western is our Western boundary, 177 or Perkins is our Eastern boundary, and then we're including from University Avenue down to 9th. And so kind of looking at how the, the current bike and trail plan overlays, where some community gateways and image-making opportunities might be. A key thing that we're looking at is multimodal and active transportation opportunities. So not just on 6th, but along 6th. And a big topic of conversation is going to be safe crossings across 6th Avenue. And then also equally important is the quality of the neighborhoods. Obviously, there's the, the Westwood neighborhood, but you've got these other neighborhoods along the corridor and around downtown that, you know, what does the community see for their future in terms of protecting them and/or revitalizing those neighborhoods? And then, as I mentioned, these opportunity sites, we've got, we'll be looking at a couple different locations that haven't been defined yet to create some concepts based on the input from the community for what the vision would be for these places. So, you know, one area we think might be worth looking at is in the downtown area, maybe around the Block 34 project, kind of understanding what's been proposed there and, and maybe there's an opportunity to, to work with that group and that, that location to, you know, kind of see what else you could do to, to develop that portion of downtown. But those are things we have yet to determine for sure. From a timing standpoint, the plan, the process is set to wrap up at the, toward the end of the year. As you can see, we're, this yellow shading kind of tracks our progress. We're here tonight, and we're still in this, kind of the tail end of this information gathering phase. The information we heard last week, as well as what we'll take from online, that's helping us to kind of understand some key words and, and priorities that will define a vision and, and set of goals and big ideas. And then we'll create, you know, ideas and recommendations over the And then we'll create, you know, ideas and recommendations over the summer to bring back to the community later in July and August, and then finally wrap it up this fall. It's a four-part process, as that timeline showed. We're in the vision, getting ready to kick into the vision and input phase, which will include more stakeholder conversations. We've got a few more of those to hold. This conversation with you all tonight, continued input from the community, and then really defining that vision. So we've, we've done our best to sort of summarize the existing land use in the project area. Some of the areas may be a little bit off, but, you know, you've all seen land use plan before, you know, the yellow is your single family. The medium density is more of that orange, orange color, brown being more high density. And you, you know, you've got some of those newer apartment buildings that have been built recently. We've got some university-owned property in the corridor that's kind of crosshatched there. And then the blue being those public semi-public spaces that may be city-owned or, you know, school district, things like that. Interesting to note for us is that, you know, there's a very small percentage of green space in the corridor or official park space, if you will, in the corridor. Something, you know, there's actually Stillwater's got a pretty decent amount of park space in the community. But within this corridor, it's fairly limited. So that's something we'll be talking about as well, but definitely, you know, heavy on the single-family residential. And then next in line would be that commercial makeup, obviously, because we're working along that commercial corridor. So I mentioned urban design. So when we look at the corridor, these are not ideas yet. This is just to give everyone kind of an understanding of what we mean by that. So when we talk gateways, are there opportunities to define the edges of the corridor or those entry points to the corridor and create a bit of a district? So maybe there is more of a downtown versus a suburban district or something that helps to identify those entry points to campus. And some of those could be, you know, selfie moments or real kind of iconic things that maybe tell you where downtown is. Or do we do something creative over with the mill? And, and some of those pieces of infrastructure that have been there forever, or things that may be more conventional in terms of neighborhood signage. And then we'll start looking at the corridor width. So, you know, understanding that on Sixth Avenue, ODOT is defining the width, how many lanes, turn lanes, those sorts of things. But we'll be looking at some of the other corridors that parallel that, as well as cross it for, you know, is the width that's, that's on those corridors today appropriate? If we think there's a priority corridor for some introduction of bike facilities, what might that look like? And so these diagrams on the left here show you how we begin to think about that and sort of categorizing. Where do the cars go? Where do the bikes go? Where do the people go? Where does the landscaping go? And how do we fit those things that the community wants within that corridor and within the available width between buildings or between right of way? So that's, that's part of where we'll be headed here in a few weeks and later this summer. And then adding on top of that framework is the character. So we're going to be, you know, wanting to know what some of those special stories are that, that, you know, tell, talk about Stillwater. We're really big on authenticity in our, our projects and making sure that if a community is defining a, an identity or a brand or something, that it's, it's true to that community. And it's, it's not just a collection of, of things out of a catalog. And when you drive through, it could be anywhere USA. We want, we want you to, you know, feel like this is your place when you, when you come, come home and when visitors see it as well. I'm going to turn it over to Marshall to share what we've heard to date. And when I say what we've heard, it's not finished yet. So there's still, still more listening we'll be doing.
Yeah, I should say what we're hearing.
Yeah.
Thanks, Terry. Yeah, we started off with the original kickoff meeting with the steering committee with a couple of different activities. And one of those activities was just to have them supply us with one word that they would use to describe the corridor. And you see some of those responses here, and we've kind of categorized them into two buckets. Obviously, the ones on the left are more challenges that are associated with the corridor. You know, it's unsafe, it's congested, it's confined, it's dangerous. But then positive words, like it is, it is the lifeline of Stillwater. There is an opportunity with this corridor, and it definitely connects different neighborhoods and districts within the community, east-west and north-south as well. We asked for their input on potential opportunity areas within the communities, parcels, areas that they think are important, strategically located, and have the opportunity to become something greater. And so you see those labeled here on the map, areas like the Strip and around Hester with the new Performing Arts Center, the Sixth and Washington intersection, maybe including something with that small green space there along Sixth Avenue, the southeast corner of Hester and Sixth, the area up around the Duck and Maple intersection. And then, as Terry mentioned before, Block 34, an important block parcel in the downtown core that could really provide some great opportunities. And we kept hearing about this cultural corridor idea. And so Block 34 is kind of nestled right within that. And that's what you see highlighted in the yellow frame there. I believe, Terry, the next slide has an enlargement of that.
Yeah, before I go there, I want to do, I do want to touch on something. So when we talk about opportunity areas, in addition to these things that have been called out, another part of what EPS is doing for us is they're creating what's called a soft parcel study. And essentially, they are going through and evaluating parcels based on the value of land with, without structures. And in some cases, you know, the value of the land may be worth more than it is with, you know, a structure that's not been kept up or something like that, or it may be a vacant parcel. So they're creating a map, and that helps us also work with staff to identify some additional areas of opportunity that may not be as apparent visually. But when they start running some of the numbers, those can surface as some, some areas for improvement that we may want to target as well.
Yes, thank you for that. And so again, this is just a blow up of that cultural corridor idea, locating these institutions from the Stillwater Public Library, the Oklahoma State Museum of Art, Different Callories, the Community Center. Is there a way to physically and visually connect these different institutions and these amenities in your community? Looking at Duncan Street and Eighth Avenue is really those two major arterials that connect all those. And this could extend all the way up into Oklahoma State's campus itself in their arts corner of their campus there in the southeast corner. So during our public workshop that we had last week down in Stillwater, during the presentation, we utilized this app that, that is, is really fun to work with. And so folks were able to put a code into their smartphones or smart devices. And we asked them a series of questions, and they were able to respond right then and there. And as the responses came in, they populated onto the screen. And with almost, you know, 90 or so people, we got quite a few responses. And so obviously, how Word Cloud works here is the larger the word, the more frequent that response was. And so one of the questions was, how would you describe the Sixth Avenue corridor to an out-of-town friend? And they had the ability to list three to five words there. And so you see, obviously, some of the larger words, busy, congested, dangerous, ugly, crowded, not pedestrian-friendly, again, have kind of a more, more challenges associated with them and not the best descriptors of words. But there are some positives in there, you know, potential opportunity connects and connections, vibrant, diverse, eclectic. So there are people that see this as, you know, this corridor as a positive thing, but definitely just kind of frames the corridor as, you know, something that needs more attention and something that maybe leaves a little bit to be desired within the community. We did ask them, you know, regardless of the potential costs, you know, what would you select as the top five things that you would do to improve the corridor, the Sixth Avenue corridor? And we gave them a whole laundry list ranging from, you know, street trees and landscaping, wider sidewalks, improved safety pedestrians, gateway improvements. And you, so you see here the responses that, that we received with the first and foremost being improved safety for pedestrians and bicycle crossings. Safety is a huge concern for those that attended this meeting and the message that we've been hearing all along. Some other more popular answers kind of touched on the streetscaping elements of street trees and landscaping, more aesthetic improvements, wider sidewalks, again, I think that speaks to pedestrian safety, making sure that there is that ample space for not just cars, but walkers and pedestrians as well, crossing the streets, moving from the university area to the downtown district. And then again, slower traffic speeds, improved lighting. So I think the next slide just calls out the top three there. But definitely, safety, like I said, is the overwhelming theme that we're getting here, just making sure that this corridor is safe for all different modes of transportation. We did ask them about, you know, what are three things that you like about the neighborhoods within the study area? And again, they were able to list up to three words. So you see things like trees and the character of these neighborhoods, the walkability of these neighborhoods, the small-town feel, the historic qualities, the potential that these neighborhoods have, the community feel that, that comes from these neighborhoods. The Westwood neighborhood, obviously, being a prominent one located on the western end of the corridor. So these are more, definitely more positive and something that, you know, as we move forward and as we continue to get input and develop this plan, these are characteristics that we're going to want to enhance and preserve as much as possible. We asked, what do you think could be done to improve and/or protect the neighborhoods within the project area in the future? And list the first three, three things that you'd do. So we've got a whole bunch of answers here, and we've done our best to kind of categorize those and, and put those into different themes. With the top two responses, they're both at 19% additional sidewalks and connectivity, bike lanes and connectivity. People want to be able to traverse this study area in other ways than just in their vehicle. And then streetscaping improvements, revitalizing homes slash code enforcement, and then roadway conditions and traffic, those, those were the top answers. So not surprising, given the words that we just saw in the Word Clouds. But connectivity, safety, and then aesthetic improvements. List three to five words that describe your impression of downtown Stillwater today. Obviously, downtown is an important asset within the community, and it's within our study area. So again, there's a lot of more positive words associated with this. There's the potential, it's walkable, it has that historic, you know, good bones and good structure. It is vibrant. But then, you know, there's some answers like empty, so that kind of contradicts vibrant in a way. But, you know, good food, charming, maybe there's some types of businesses that there's too many of. You know, the dispensaries is a common response that we receive. But again, some, I think, potential I thought was cool that that was the, the number one word that came out here. There is that potential, it has the good bones to really become something even more special in the future. We asked, what things have you experienced in other places that you think would make downtown Stillwater an even better place to be? Again, listing three to five things overwhelmingly gathering places and events. And we had some breakout discussions after the large group meeting. And this was something that I heard in my group discussion very much, was that there just, there's this desire to have gathering spaces of all sizes, large, intimate, that people really love the fact that there's now that outdoor patio out in front of the wine bar, outdoor dining was a popular response, the amenities that go along with that. In addition to just generally more dining options and restaurants, streetscape improvements, street trees was a big part of that, providing shade, especially during the hot summer months. And then again, bicycle and pedestrian improvements found their way into the downtown area as well.
All right, I'll take this one. Yeah. So at the meeting, for those that weren't there, we broke out into three different groups for some, some smaller group conversations. And we had one group that focused on pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Another group that focused on neighborhood, neighborhoods and housing. And then another one that focused on more corridor development, course development types of conversations. We don't have all of that information summarized yet, but I did want to touch on this. It looks a little messy, but this is just a photograph of a map that was at that workshop that we just asked people to identify what they felt like were the, the most important crossings, north-south crossings along the corridor for our best opportunities for, for bike-ped facility crossings. In the discussion, you know, people commented, well, there's a crossing wherever there's a signal. True, but what we wanted to get to is where does it make sense to maybe improve or add additional facilities, bike lanes, more or wider sidewalks, or, you know, enhanced crossing protections, whatever those might be? Out of that, this sort of summarizes some of those. This isn't the final, there's still some, some cleanup and some sifting through this that we'll have to do. But you can see how the dots kind of congregate more around that, what we've called that sort of downtown or urban area over around Washington, the Strip and those connections to campus. So you've got the downtown, the campus, and then you've got, as you get out farther to the west, not as many signalized intersections. But then you get by the school, there was discussion about medical center, and that's something we're going to look at. And then there was an interesting discussion about over at, kind of between Willis and Ridge, and maybe the opportunity for an underpass at Duck Creek that might be considered. Don't know if it's feasible, don't know how viable it is, but it was this conversation that came up and to come, comment that that could provide a connection from Ingram Park down to, I believe it's Myers Park, down to the south, as well as neighborhood connections for kids and families to go to and from school and potentially walk a little bit safer route. And then obviously, the signalized intersection at Western was another one that was talked about. And, and the improvements that have all already been made with wider sidewalks and multi-use pathway up and around that north edge of campus. And then the other one was this discussion about the potential of an underpass at Boomer Creek to connect with the trail system and take advantage of that, wherever we can maybe find a place for a grade separated crossing just based on the volume of traffic and speeds. And then finally, to kind of pull this all together and how this starts to work for us in our mind is, looking back at that map that I showed you earlier, that diagram was created for us based on our initial reaction to the corridor. And then we had the conversation with the community about those crossing locations. And it all starts to come together. So you can see how these things really do begin to relate in terms of gateway opportunities. Maybe there's something associated where we're enhancing the gateway and signage over at Perkins, the importance of the Main Street crossing and, and that, those downtown linkages. And, you know, extending, expanding the facilities that are on Duck today. And then when you get over to campus and those connections to campus for students that live on the, you know, south side of the corridor and just others that want to, want to move north and south there. And then we have a bit of a gap where it's more suburban. Not saying families aren't trying to cross, but, you know, that's something we'll talk about is, is there some mid, mid-range area we might want to introduce, you know, signal that's not there today? So that's how this will all start to come together. These layers start to tell us something, and we're beginning to see some of that come through now. And then we'll start the layer on these words that Marshall shared. And, and, you know, that's how these ideas start to surface for us. So what's next? As I mentioned, online engagement is going live or went live today. And the intent is to have that online at least through next week Friday. Marshall mentioned, we had about 90 people show up at the public meeting, which was great, especially given that we're just sort of coming, you know, starting to emerge from COVID. Maybe that's part of why people came out, because they were excited to do something. So if we could leverage that, great. But based on our experience over the past year, as we've really shifted almost totally virtual and the amount of turnout and response we've had, compare that with 90 people in person, we wouldn't be shocked to see another 200 to 300 interactions based on people that haven't come out yet, but word spreading. So we're, we're anxious to see the feedback that starts to come in once this all gets, you know, advertised. Another advisory committee meeting later this month to share an update with them as well. And then we'll start working on the initial corridor plan and be back in July. And then ultimately to the community in August, and then come back to this group in August as well for kind of get your initial. To the community in August and then come back to this group in August as well for kind of get your initial feedback. So with that. Lot of information. Happy to answer any questions or take any, any comments you might have.
I have, I have one comment initially, just something that stood out on your map. Was that I know that duck was discussed as a north, south corridor for biking. And cause that in the meeting and it was dismissed. Because of visibility with the Penn County courthouse building.
I wouldn't say it was dismissed. At this point, it was just noted that.
Okay.
There may be some visibility issues, but at this point. That's why I say these still need to be sifted through embedded and they're all ideas at this point.
Okay, great. My next question is, how many response, you know, how many responses you've gotten thus far on the, because I'm on the webpage now as well.
Oh, it's just probably, I don't know if we've gotten any, I don't even know if it's the, if it's fully prepared yet. Ryan was putting some finishing touches on it before the meeting, I know that.
There's still a few tweaks. We've had one person this afternoon, early evening, give some feedback and, but. We're designing it so the visual preference boards that were at the meeting. Are essentially going to be posted as a survey question. So people can vote. And pick which images stick out to them. The, the other questions are in a survey format as well on speak up Stillwater. So you can go through that and people can vote as well. And then we'll be working with our civic engagement folks downstairs to help push that information out through social media outlets as well on the next 24 hours.
Okay, I will tell you, tell you, Ryan, that I'm, I loaded this up and I'm on a pretty decent connection. Like we had several zoom calls going earlier and my connection got unstable, but. It took me a solid like seven minutes to load this page. Like.
The.
Want to load the.
These are, yeah, these are large JPEGs. So it's gonna, it might be a little bit slower than normal.
Right.
We'll, we'll work on that part.
But then is there any way we can get? Data that you guys presented in this meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we can give you the whole, the whole presentation. If that's what you're wanting, we can get you that.
Perfect.
Send that to Ryan. So Ryan, we'll just send you a PDF after the meeting.
Yes, please.
And then is this, I know we were going to post. The presentation on speak up Stillwater. Did that get posted from the public meeting?
It hasn't yet. We're still working on trying to get that converted. So that's been the, the other part we're still working on.
Okay.
I know one person's shared with us, the images were a little small originally. So we're trying to make those larger. On the survey questions. So people can actually see what information is on those boards.
It's a balance, big enough to read, small enough to not crash your computer.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking. I'm like, I'm on a decent computer with decent amount of like. Video processing ability, but even on my old computer, this might, it might struggle here with this page. Could you not make it thumbnails that people can click on?
We can try and work on that too.
Other questions, comments?
Well, I have a quick comment and then a question. Well, I don't know how quick the comment is. Full disclosure, when I moved into Stillwater 24 years ago. Lived in the neighborhood on Ridge, a block and a half south of Sixth. So. Lived there for 10 years. So I'm relatively intimate. All that's kind of an oxymoron considering sixth. With the situation around it. Now, the first illustration photo you had leading into your presentation tonight. Looked like a very benign view of a possible corridor development. And I think the elephant in the room is, in, is that the city. Not only has no design authority over the actual street design, but has little input into that. And that's going to potentially create a real scar through the north and south of Sixth. So connectivity is going to be a major issue. Although I'm sure everyone knows that. Now, the question I have is there's a corridor redevelopment design project that's, as far as I know, ongoing. Has your group have, had any connection with this other group? Because I think there's a big. Intersect between the Sixth Avenue corridor. Project and the corridor redevelopment district.
Are you talking about the TIF district?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, we're aware of that. It's part of. Everything that's going into the hopper of our consideration, but yeah, we're, we're aware of that as well.
Staff would also note that we've had some conversations with the Smart Growth America, the Farm Based Code Institute. So they have some rough idea of what Confluence is doing and we're going to work to help tie those things together, just like we're going to work toward helping tie. Engineering design into this study as well and making sure things work seamlessly or as seamlessly as we can get them.
Yeah. And that to speak to the elephant in the room comment, that's something that. That's a reason we have the firm HDR on our team. They do a lot of DOT work. And a lot of the, we've done a number of projects similar to this coordinating with, with KDOT, with MoDOT. And. It's, you know, it's a conversation you have to start and you have to. You know, you have to work your way through it, but. It helps whenever the city and the community. Has some sense of, I guess, consistency in what they want. The fact that ODOT is, is out in front to a certain extent, creating their concept in this re, the redesign. That can be a good thing because we know change is coming. So I would say we've had issues, situations before where. Communities were out in front and had big ideas and. The DOT really didn't have any funding or any plans to do anything. In the near term. And then when they did five years, 10 years later. Energy was lost behind the vision because change of leadership in that community, whatever. And so there can be some real benefits. To ODOT already thinking about and moving forward with a project like this. And this plan can feed into that. So. There's an opportunity if we're all communicating and playing this right, that we can. You know, hopefully leverage that project to actually implement some. Some, something visible as an outcome of the, of the project and of the planning study as well. So. Doesn't come without hurdles, you know, certainly, but it can be an opportunity as well. Other comments? Okay. So Ryan, we'll get you a PDF of this. So you can share it with the group. And as we've told everybody. If anything comes up after we're off the call and. Something that you didn't think of, feel free to, you know, send it to Ryan. He can get it to us. We're still, like I said, still hearing, still learning. So. Any, any thoughts you have are going to be helpful to us. So appreciate everybody's time tonight and look forward to seeing you again soon.
You're all very much, very interesting and we appreciate your work. Excellent.
Absolutely. We'll talk to you later.
Very well. Okay, with that. I have, it doesn't look like we have any minutes. So I think at that point, unless there's anything else from staff. Take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We moved in second and that we will adjourn. We will now vote. Yes.
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 The motion passes five yes to no, no. It's very observant, everyone. Excellent. Our next planning commission meeting will be April 20th. Thank you all for your participation. Wait, this evening, yes.